Will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley from the Goddard Center Committee at the Heritage Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today humbly needy of your grace, praying for the power of your Holy Spirit to fill us and to refresh us. We ask for your forgiveness in all the ways that we wandered away from you. We need your healing and we need your grace. Remind us of the hope that we have in you. Thank you for your faithfulness and that you're constantly at work on behalf of us here in our homes, our community. Lord, I just ask for forgiveness for all of us, for any roles we played, taken by all that the world offers us, and allowing it to get in the way of what's important in our lives. Thank you for those that are hurting and yet have your healing. Thank you for our neighbors that are in need but are finding help, and thank you for all the hands that serve with love and put God's love into action. Lord, help us to just love with mercy and act justly. And Lord, just help us to remember that you are God, you are good, and you are in control. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. And I would ask if I could get some indulgence for a moment from the council. We will do citizens' requests next, but we would like to welcome Valerie Byrne, who is the president and CEO of The Chamber, and she wanted to come up and just say a couple of words of welcome, so let's please welcome Valerie Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I appreciate the ear of the council as I have an opportunity to put a face to a name, and thank you for your participation with The Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Partnership. Am I not close enough? You'll be sorry you ever gave me a microphone. I promise. On behalf of our board, I am committing to you now here today to be more present, to ensure that you have an opportunity to hear from our organization on a more regular basis. We're eager to come before you more frequently to ensure that we have proper communication so you are fully aware of the things that not only are we being successful at achieving, but also that we're working behind the scenes to make sure that our community continues on the rise that it's on, the trajectory it's on. We have a great team at The Chamber. I'm not overwhelmed yet by all that, the work that they are doing, but I do look forward to being able to come before you to share some of the successes along the way. I think our communication is important. Your investment in our organization is meaningful, and I want to ensure that you have the right assurances in order to know that we are doing work on your behalf within your community. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Next up is citizens' request, and Lee Phillips, and please state your name and your address, please. And Lee, you'll have five minutes.
For the short people in the room. Lee Phillips, Independence, Missouri. Good evening. When the charter questions were being considered, all council members voted in favor of recording those meetings. At that time, transparency was rightly upheld as a priority and agreed that public deserved to see and hear how foundational changes to city governance were being discussed. That was a commendable and wise decision. Yet, two weeks ago, when the council was asked to consider recording discussions related on other matters of public concern, the vote shifted. This time, only four members voted in favor of recording and three voted against. This raises a sincere and important question. How can the same council members who once championed transparency for the charter now hesitate to apply that same principle to broader issues of governance? What changed? If transparency is a principle, then it should be applied consistently, not selectively. Citizens deserve to understand why this shift occurred. What made this matter different in your eyes? Why are you reluctant to have recordings, and why? The inconsistency undermines public trust and invites concern. If a process was worth recording then, it's worth recording now. Given that a citizen-led audit request is already on the table, this council should be leaning into transparency, not pulling away from it. This is an opportunity to show good faith and strengthen confidence in local leadership. If there were ever a moment to demonstrate open, responsive governance, it is now. That inconsistency is especially disheartening in light of Resolution Number 7002, which clearly directs the city manager to implement procedures to ensure that all council committee meetings, study sessions, and other official public meetings are recorded and made available to the public via the city's website. The resolution rightly emphasizes the importance of transparency and public access, and I want to sincerely thank those who supported and passed it. Ironically, while Resolution 7002 affirms the need for accessible records, recent excuses used to delay or deny recording, bandwidth, and staffing seem more like a lack of resolve than true limitations. One council member helpfully clarified that it's not a bandwidth issue at all, but a staffing issue, which also puts to rest the argument about the live streaming capabilities. Even so, neither reason justifies holding back public access to meetings. These are not impossible challenges. They are simply solvable ones, and our city deserves the effort. This is especially important for those who may seek higher office in 2026. Leadership isn't about aspirations, it's about integrity in action. Those who wish to lead this city must be willing to do so in the light. To my fellow citizens, it's worth noting that some of the very individuals now preparing to run for office in 2026 have voted against transparency. That decision matters. It reveals a gap between stated values and voting behavior, and it offers a glimpse into the kind of leadership we can expect. This isn't a procedural issue, it's a matter of trust. Some officials have suggested that citizens can simply attend meetings in person, but I've said it before and I'll say it again, that suggestion overlooks the realities people face. Many residents are juggling families, jobs, health challenges, and other responsibilities. Recording meetings isn't a luxury, it's a means of access. It's a practical and powerful way to include more people in their own governance. Transparency isn't optional, it's foundational. Don't just listen to what is said, watch how your representatives vote. The council has already passed Resolution 7002. The public deserves to see it honored in full, not partially, not selectively. So I encourage every resident to stay engaged, keep asking questions, expect consistency, and when you go to the voting booth in both April of 2026 and again in April of 2028, remember who stood for transparency and who stepped away from it. Thank you. God bless.
Next up, we have the presentation of Resolution 25773. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, let's go ahead and call the roll, and then I'll read the resolution, if I may, please.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And Resolution 25773 passes six in favor and zero opposed. And this resolution recognizes Mattie Raccoon as the I-STAR recipient of the month. It is my honor tonight to recognize August 2025 I-STAR Employee of the Month, Mattie Raccoon. Since the moment Mattie joined the City of Independence, she has been nothing short of a force, bringing energy, strategy, and heart in every aspect of her work. Mattie serves as a key communicator between the city and our public, and in just one year, she transformed the way we connect with our community. Mattie brought a fresh voice to our social media platforms, one that engages, entertains, and informs, all while expressing a genuine love for our hometown and the people in it. And the results speak volumes. Under her leadership, our followers count has grown more than 10%. More than 2,000 new people have chosen to connect with the City of Independence. But this is more than just numbers. Each of those followers represent a taxpayer, a constituent, a community member, someone who is more likely to now see our updates, attend our events, and participate in our initiatives. This increased engagement extends our reach beyond our own borders, bringing positive attention to Independence across the metro area, even across the country. One shining example, on New Year's Eve, Mattie captured a simple video on her phone of our street crews, uh, street crews preparing for a storm. Because of this quick thinking and perfect timing before the holiday and before the storm, the video was picked by the National Weather Service, and a national audience had its eyes on Independence. Thank to her, thank you to her initiative. Her social media strategy is constantly evolving, and she's never stops learning. She's data-driven, strategic, and always looking to improve. Take our recent general obligation bond initiative. Mattie led the creation of six informational videos, but she didn't stop there. She monitored performance metrics in real time and adjusted everything from video length and post-timing to the first image viewers would see. Her commitment to continuous improvement reflects not only her personal work ethic, but the very core of our city's values. And let's not forget, she's doing the work of multiple people with determination, grace, and a smile. Mattie, you're a testament to what makes Independence shine. You embody excellence, innovation, and heart. Thank you for your incredible work and representing our city so well. Please join me in congratulating our I-STAR recipient of the month for August 2025, Mattie Raccoon. I love whoever said that. Well done. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. And Councilmember Fears, can I ask you to play the role of the mayor pro tem on this one?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to pull anything out for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can you please pull Resolution 25 dot dash 776?
Thank you. Anyone else want to pull any other items?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can we pull Item 25774?
Thank you very much. And that was Councilmember McCandless, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Anyone else? And just for the sake of consistency, I'm going to go ahead and pull the other two resolutions and, uh, and just allow the city manager to talk about all those changes there, if we may. Anyone else want to pull anything else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll to approve the items for the consent agenda?
Councilmember Fears. Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the consent agenda items are passed, six in favor, zero opposed. We're just going to go down the list. Councilmember Stewart, if I may, ask for your indulgence, and we will proceed with Councilmember McCandless going first, and we'll just go one, two, three, four, if that's okay. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours on 25774.
Thank you. I am happy to be the council liaison to the Personnel Committee so I can assure the council that we had a robust discussion on all of these and had quite a bit of give and take, and it was unanimous in the recommendations to this body. That's the first thing. I will just ask that, Mr. City Manager, if you would explain that this isn't really a change in policy as much as it is a clarification of language, and how you can explain to the people watching what the floating holiday is.
Yes, and again, thank you for your comments, Councilmember, about the work of our Personnel Board and our staff. This resolution would update the personnel policies to clarify language around city holidays. Several years ago, City Council adopted a new city holiday in line with the federal government, now recognizing Juneteenth as one of the city holidays that we observe and now are closed to the public on that day, and employees, unless they are required to report to work, don't otherwise do so. At that time, we made the decision that we did not want to add an additional day that the full city was closed to the general public, so the decision was made to identify President's Day as what was known as a floating or flex holiday. That has presented a little bit of confusion for both employees and the public as to whether or not we are open on President's Day to the general public. So just to clarify, we are, and this will clean that up in personnel policies by removing it from the list of observed city holidays and instead make each city employee eligible for an additional flex or floating holiday.
Thank you very much. I move approval of 25774.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25774?
I second the motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we've got a motion and a second on 25774. And Councilmember Wiley, thank you for clarifying that, so I am grateful for you. Thank you. Any other discussion on 25774? Mr. City Manager, just a clarification for myself, I think I know what a floating holiday is, but for those that are watching, in this example of a floating holiday, what does that mean for an average employee?
Yes, employees would have eight hours or a day where they would be able to take that at their preference, so might be a random day in September, but it's up to them to elect when they would choose to use that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else have a further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25774.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25774 passes six in favor, zero opposed. I make a motion for 25775. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. And again, Mr. City Manager, for the clarifications purposes, for those that are watching, kind of just a real brief description of this for those who are watching.
Previously, our personnel policies had some different languages around different types of leave of absences that were requested, whether they were paid or unpaid leave of absences, but the process was the same regardless of what type of leave of absence that was, so this just makes one uniform leave of absence process and outlines the steps that must be taken to request and have that approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25775? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25775.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25775 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25776. Councilmember Stewart, please give us a motion and we'll give you a second.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 25 dash 776.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I just had a question about this one. It states in there that new full-time employees will be credited 48 hours of sick time on their first day of employment. Um, and then it, I just want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to something where somebody could come in their first day of work, get 48 hours of sick time, come in a couple of days, call in, and then quit, and then, and then, nothing like that could actually happen with this, could it?
So under this new policy, if adopted, those employees in their first six months, on the day they start, as you mentioned, Councilmember, would be loaded with 48 hours of sick leave. If they were to end their employment, or the city were to end their employment prior to that, the balance would fall off. What I would also remind the council and the public of is that several years ago, we made a change that new hires after the end of December of 2023 no longer have their sick leave paid out, so this is not accruing a financial liability for the city.
Okay. That's just one I want to check on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on 25776? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25776 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25770. Can I, I make, oh, excuse me, 25777. I make a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. So, if I may, Mr. City Manager, just kind of give us a little bit of this explanation on this one, how it, a little bit of the differences of the old policy and the new policy, please.
Again, there's kind of been some inconsistent practices, and we want to provide uniform definition across all departments in the personnel policies where that should be enumerated. So this will ensure that both the Human Resources Director and the city manager are required to sign off on any disciplinary action or recommendation for termination. Number one, that provides consistency. Number two, that ensures multiple levels of review. I should also mention that in that chain of command would be the department director, where that would originate, then move to Human Resources, and then finally the city manager's office. We require review and signature at all three levels, again, for consistency, but also for additional scrutiny to ensure the discipline and/or termination that's being recommended is warranted.
And I read here, if I may, and I could, the resolution states that staff members who are on service probation or as a result of disciplinary action will not be eligible for transfer or probation. Is that correct, too?
Yes, sir. We have had some situations where an employee maybe is under some sort of service probation in their current department, and then they apply for a position that would transfer them to a different department. This would ensure that, you know, they are still being coached up and monitored in their current department before they would be eligible to lateral into a different city department.
So that, that probation or disciplinary action would need to be taken care of before they're eligible for promotion?
Absolutely.
Or transfer at that point, if I'm understanding correctly?
You are.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you for indulging us on that discussion.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on Item 25777? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25777 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to a public hearing. We're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application to rezonate the property at 19300 East 37th Terrace from C2 General Commercial to R30 slash PUD High Density Residential slash Planned Unit Development and Approval of a Preliminary Development Plan. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning, PUD, was considered by Planning Commission on June 24th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is to rezone property that's C2 General Commercial to R30 High Density Residential for what's called the Infinity Apartments. It's a 360-unit, four-story, single-story residential structure with a two-level parking structure below. The development is located at the corner of 37th Street Terrace and Jackson Drive. Currently, it's an undeveloped and unplatted piece of property. I have no new information to provide.
Any questions? And if I may ask, Mr. Arroyo, did this one, and I may have missed it when you were making your statements, did this go to the Planning Commission? Was it approved?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. You may have stated it, I have missed it, so please proceed.
Just for people who aren't great at their geography, can you talk about what this is in an area of other apartment complexes, kind of the area that it'll be placed?
That is correct. There's an apartment complex across the street. In front of this is where kind of the, it's behind the movie theater area, and again, it's, it would actually make sense for where this is located.
I think this was anticipated when the first sets of apartments went in, and anticipated that this would eventually become apartments, so consistent with that.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have a further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25 dash 061, second reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R30 slash PUD High Density Residential slash Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 19300 East 37th Terrace South. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 25061? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25061 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to ordinances. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25 dash 062, second reading. An ordinance vacating a portion of an existing right-of-way and accepting new right-of-way of all that part of 2020 Quail Drive lying in, on, and across replat of Lot 1 of ISD East Elementary Center, a subdivision of Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Any discussion on 25062?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you just clarify this piece of land and what sort of surrounds this right-of-way?
Yes, I would be glad to. This is a land that is around Little Blue Elementary School in Independence, and this would, land that city had a right-of-way on in case we needed, you know, additional utility work, infrastructure, things of that nature. We don't. School district has higher and better use for that, so this would allow us to vacate that right-of-way for their use.
So they actually own the land around it, we're just vacating the right-of-way?
That is correct.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have a further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25062.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25062 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25063. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25 dash 063, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to appropriate $250,000 from the City of Independence opioid settlement funds for the city's alternative response to community health program for fiscal year 2025-2026. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25063?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Opioid settlement funds are dollars that were dedicated to communities as recompense, punishment... punishment, I don't know what you want to say, from pharmaceutical companies and from pharmacies for filling far, far, far too many opioid prescriptions. And so in the courts, they were given punitive damages with the agreement that these dollars would be divided up to communities that were highly impacted by opioid use. Independence received some of those funds, and so I just want people to know where those came from. I am hoping that we can find dollars for the ARCH program in our general budget in the future so that these dollars can go to other uses. Certainly, this is an acceptable use according to the rules that were written, but hoping that we can work harder on prevention, treatment, and counseling, especially for children who've had parents who have had opioids affect their family. So I know that was the original intent of the opioid committee because we were waiting on a final settlement from Purdue through the Supreme Court, and because the dollars were allocated for this year, that commission hasn't been put into effect. But I just, I want the community to know that we are really going to do our very best to be sure that those dollars are used for additional treatments and prevention for opioid use disorders. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member. Councilmember McCandless, anyone else have a further discussion on twenty-five, zero-six-three?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I just want to talk a little bit about how proud I am of the ARCH program and what it's done for our community. It's, I did a ride along with them, and it's, it's, it's very, it's very powerful. It's much needed in our, in our community, and I'm proud of this program, and I'm really glad that we have it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five, zero-six-three, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, zero-six-three passes six in favors, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-six-four, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed thirty-two-million-dollar principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series twenty-twenty-five of the City of Independence, Missouri, and certain other documents and actions by the city. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-six-five, first reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number one-nine-four-two-five and the Home dash AARP twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Annual Action Plan and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-five zero-six-six, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Independence, Missouri to amend its Articles of Incorporation. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-six-seven, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from Jackson County, Missouri, for a recipient award from Combat, which allocates ninety thousand dollars to the City of Independence, Missouri, for a substance use and prevention program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, which was approved by ordinance number one-nine-six-eight-two. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-six-eight, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the realignment of East US Twenty-four Highway and South Ash Avenue intersection in connection with the Twenty-four Highway Complete Streets Phase Three Project, City Project number one-one-two-two-one-two slash Federal Project number CMAQ dash three-three-seven-nine parentheses four-four-three. First reading.
Thank you. And that brings us to Councilmember Comments, and tonight I'm going to start with Councilmember Fears. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So many people have heard about the Wally's Travel Center project that's proposed for Nolan Road just north of I-70, but many still haven't, or you have been wondering why nothing has happened at that site since their initial announcement over a year ago. So I want to share that as of now, Wally's is actively moving ahead, and their project is scheduled to go before the Planning Commission on August twenty-sixth and before the City Council next month. I'd like to thank Wally's, the Wally's team, for hosting a well-attended pub, public meeting last Thursday evening to address many of the community's questions and concerns, especially around the traffic. Michael Rubenstein, Wally's president and CEO, Nathan Hale, Director of Construction and Facilities, their traffic engineer, and other team members took the time to answer questions and provide some clarification on light pollution and noise. The traffic engineer gave a thorough explanation of expected impacts, including turning improvements, signal timing, traffic volume, and improvements like ramp extensions to help with congestion. They will also construct a six-foot masonry wall along the north side of the property as a buffer for those residents. Wally's also shared that they intend to invest five to seven million dollars of their own funds for the traffic-related improvements. To me, that demonstrates a pretty strong commitment to being a good community partner. The overall tone of the meeting was positive, with many residents expressing interest in the development. This project is also expected to bring nearly two-hundred jobs to the area. A development of this scale has the potential to spur additional investment, attract travelers, and support surrounding businesses. So I am looking forward to see how this project moves forward and the potential positive impact that it could have on the west side of our city. So I want to mention that anyone who is interested is welcome to come speak at the Planning Commission on August twenty-sixth because your input is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things tonight. First, Legal Aid of Western Missouri recently opened a new office in Independence at three-oh-four West Walnut, a block south of the Jackson County Courthouse on the Independence Square. The office is open Monday through Thursday from eight-thirty to five PM. Legal Aid handles a variety of legal issues, including domestic violence protection, public benefits, social security disability and overpayments, consumer debt defense, homeownership issues like foreclosures, real estate tax, title issues, beneficiary deeds, eviction defense, child and adult guardianships, and more. And I also want to mention that Councilmember McCandless worked very hard to make this happen, and we're very grateful that they're here. It's going to be a fantastic resource for those who need legal help and can't afford it. You can get more information about Legal Aid's work at lawmo.org, where you can fill out an application before you drop by their office. And then last week, I had a great visit with Tina Bartlett, the CEO of the Independence Housing Authority. Tina walked me through the important work her team does every day to support our neighbors who need safe, affordable housing. We toured several, several of their public housing properties, Hocker Heights, Pleasant Heights, and Southview Manor, and I got to see firsthand the one- and two-bedroom units they offer, as well as the ongoing renovations that are happening in several of the, in two of the buildings. Tina also spoke candidly about the funding challenges they're navigating and the increasing need among the elderly and families with young children. The waitlist for their services is really overwhelming. It was an insightful and important visit, and I'm proud to serve as the City Council liaison to the Housing Authority Board. I'm really looking forward to working more closely, closely with them as they support their mission. Tina is coming to speak at a study session on August twenty-fifth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you very much. First tip of the hat to the Parks Department for a very fun dragonfly festival where we got to go out with our nets and run around in a field, which, you know, was near and dear to my heart. There were a lot of kids there, too, so I wasn't by myself. I think you probably had me carted away if that was the case. The others, here's your history moment. It's the sixtieth anniversary of the signing of Medicare and Medicaid into law, and you may or may not know that that was done in nineteen sixty-five with President Johnson, but because Truman had such an important role in that, Johnson honored him by coming to Independence and signing it into law here at the Truman Library. What is also amusing, and perhaps nobody knows, is that they had their very special pens, and they had Medicare Card One and Two for Harry and Bess, and they had pomp and circumstances, and all kind of famous people showed up, only they forgot the bills on the plane, and so the motorcycle squad had to bring them flying across town so that they can make them there in order for the signing. So our police have many roles in the world. I just, I want to give Bob a shout-out so he knows that, that was an act of bravery by the, by the police department. I want to speak a little bit to the comments earlier about transparency. You know, this is about the general obligation bond, and we passed one for streets, sidewalks, and bridges, and that is coming along, and I hope that you'll touch on that a little bit in your comments. Thank you. We made sure that this came to two separate committees so that it had additional scrutiny, so it's going to both Audit and Finance and to the Streets Oversight Committee, so there's two opportunities for questions to be asked. And we, we broadcast this meeting, we broadcast some other meetings. The comment wasn't wrong, that people can't stop what they're doing to come in the middle of the day to listen to these, but it's also true that it takes a lot of dedication to, on your downtime, queue this up and listen to a committee meeting. I have challenged the Communications Department to think about ways that we communicate effectively and better in the way people like to receive those. Is that a five-minute video that's a summary of the commission meeting? Is it a condensed version of the conversation at that meeting? Is it a, an infographic? Is it a small summary? I just think that because we've done things one way doesn't mean that's the only way or the right way. If you look at the number of people who touch on the agenda, the written document, it's much higher than the people who actually watch it. So I want us to just think about people communicate and get their information in really different ways than they ever have, and so that is my challenge to us, is to think about transparency differently than we always have, so I know that that will be something that we continue to work on. That's all I have today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I, too, was at the Wally's presentation. I thought they did a good job. It was well-attended. The discussion was positive, and I look forward to working with them on steps moving forward because we would certainly, as a city, like to have that empty space, have something vibrant and alive there, and we desperately need the tax revenue, there's no question. On July twenty-seventh, Corey's Network, Michelle, lost a son, Corey Lekovich, of a stabbing, oh, it's been probably ten years ago now, and in her grief and her challenges, she decided to start Corey's Network in remembrance of her son, and she helps families who have lost loved ones to violence in the metro area, and she's literally helped over five-hundred families pay for the funerals for their loved one, as well as bringing to light and asking, you know, police departments from various areas to work on those cases and to continue to keep those cases. And this is the first year that she's been working on that, that she actually had a decrease in the number of cases. They put out the flyers out in the, in front of Speaks Chapel, and they put those out, and this year they put sixty fewer than they did last year because those cases were solved. And that is extraordinary work, and I just wanted to do a shout-out for Corey's Network and the work that Michelle and her husband Bob do, and all the people that they touch, and to see the extraordinary growth of hers as a person to say, to take this tragedy and to turn, to turn it into something that's very positive for our community and the work that she continues to do. So that's all the comments I have. Mr. City Manager, we will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate that as well. A couple of things that I want to share with the council. I know you're all aware that we've been working to update our Parks Master Plan, which is about fifteen years old now. I want to thank all of our community members who have participated in completing the survey that will be used to help drive and formulate those recommendations. We've now received enough responses to that, that the third-party firm managing that is able to declare that statistically significant, so they've closed that portion of this project, and we are still on track to have recommendations made to the council either by the end of this calendar year or very early in calendar year twenty-twenty-six, so pleased to see that coming along. Also, just want to touch on, as Councilmember McCandless was sharing, tonight you had first reading of the ordinance that would allow the city to move forward with the sale of the first tranche of general obligation bond funds that were approved as part of the fifty-five million-dollar issue this past April. Part of having bonds issued requires you to get a credit rating with an independent firm. A city used Standard and Poor's internationally recognized independent credit rating firm. I do want to share that they sustained our current credit rating and gave the general obligation bond series for this particular tranche a rating of A. I want to share with you a couple of the comments that they made, just so you're not taking it from me. So I'm quoting here, but they noted and complimented positive operations due to healthy sales, tax revenue gains, and conservative budgeting, as well as management policies and practices that are detailed and forward-looking. Overall, the firm noted, and again, I'll quote here, "We could raise the rating if Independence were to sustain strong fiscal operations coupled with ongoing stability associated with revenue supporting its debt." That's not news that should be taken lightly. We've worked hard over the years to right-size many of our operations, to rebuild the city's fiscal health. I know all those decisions weren't always easy, but I do want to compliment the council for your leadership because ratings like this are not easily gained. Rating agencies do not just hand out compliments, they don't just pass on flowery language. This is a strong indication of their credit outlook and our worthiness as a municipality, and that should not be taken for granted. Mayor, with that, I don't have anything else, and I'm happy to yield.
Thank you very much. And if there's no one else, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.